Good evening and welcome to the June the 8th, 2016 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. Before I start on the agenda tonight, I'll explain why we're wearing these hats of them being white hats and we always think we're of ourselves as the good guys, you know. We are in support of our good friend Vice Mayor Young to my left over here who is going through chemotherapy right now. And Doug, you have all of our best wishes for the Planning Commission, for the staff, and for the entire city of Murfreesboro.
Thank you, Bob. I just wish I had some hair.
Well, I've been saying that for a long time, you know. Yours will come back, mine won't.
Neither will mine.
That being said, Doug, we're 100% behind you. Thank you for being here.
It means a lot to me. These have become my friends and acquaintances over the years and it means a lot to me, so thank you.
The first thing on the agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of the March 16th Meeting of the Planning Commission. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have only one public hearing scheduled this evening. That's a zoning application for approximately six acres located along Spike Trail and Maya Drive to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Old South Properties is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening to you, sir. We do have one public hearing scheduled this evening and it is for a petition for a zoning change which has been made to the city of Murfreesboro and it's for property for which you studied annexation earlier this year. The matter of annexation was approved, recommended to be approved by the Planning Commission, but at City Council, it's held up until some additional conditions could be met with the expectation that the house that's currently located there would continue to locate there. And the applicant is different, of course, that's the property owner. Old South Properties has made a contract to purchase this property from the property owner and they would like to change the zoning so they can develop it and have it be a part of the adjacent development which they have. You can see on the map that the subject area is shaded orange. It does have frontage along Maya Drive, along Foxfire Court, and Spike Trail that ends into the property. The subject property does consist of one parcel and it does have a single-family home on it. The properties to the south and west are zoned PRD, that's Planned Residential District, and the properties to the north and east are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and are zoned RM which is a density, single-family residential subdivision. As I mentioned, the applicants have a contract to purchase this property and they'd like to make it a part of the Indian Creek subdivision, which is that PRD that you see on the map. Indian Creek subdivision is developed and it has different phases and it has some single-family homes and it has some multifamily homes which are condominiums that are constructed in the form of townhomes. They would like for this to be a part of the Indian Creek subdivision. It will become a part of that HOA and it will also be able to enjoy the amenities that are currently in that development. The PRD program book that has been provided proposes a density of 11.7 dwelling units per acre with these not having any attached garages but having parking and parking lots. They have shown an excess of 18 parking spaces throughout the development to provide some additional parking for future guests and folks that may wish to visit the property. This PRD is very similar to the adjacent multifamily portion and so it's been successful, so they'd like to expand that. The plan development process allows for exceptions to the zoning ordinance to be made and there are no exceptions to the zoning ordinance. Before this goes to council, there will be correction in the pattern book that says 15-foot setbacks. There's no need for a reduced setback. They can meet setback in the RM 12 district and they can correct that. I think it was just an oversight and Mr. Taylor will be able to speak to that in just a moment. You do have the program book. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Matt Taylor to the lectern to go through a PowerPoint presentation, after which you should conduct a public hearing before making your recommendation to City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC and I'm here tonight to give a brief presentation over the bills in Indian Creek, Section 4, as we have termed it. We have requested a PRD zoning for this to match the PRD zoning that we requested and built out the rest of Indian Creek with several years ago and we'd like to continue that As Ms. Green said, the property itself is located at the end of Maya Drive and to the south of Foxfire Court and Spike Trail. It's just under six acres in size. It currently does have a single structure on it while most of the rest of the property is open yard or pasture land. Here's kind of a larger view. You see Fortress Boulevard to the west, I-24 to the east and north, as well as John Rice Boulevard to the north, and then Blaze Drive to the south. And here's a picture of the existing townhomes inside of Indian Creek itself. Some of the existing homes along our northern boundary. This is looking on the property itself from Spike Trail or Foxfire. This is looking back on the property itself from Foxfire as well. The plan itself, as I said earlier, is a PRD zoning, 70 townhomes on just under six acres. All the utilities here will be underground utilities, just like in the existing Indian Creek. The unit sizes will mimic the sizes inside of Indian Creek itself, been a minimum of 1,200 up to about 1,450 square feet in size. We anticipate all these units to be two stories in nature. We have also had a preliminary agreement with the existing HOA of Indian Creek to join that HOA. Will contribute financially back into that HOA as these are sold and then these owners will pay monthly fees back to that association so that we have the same management company and have access to the amenities that were constructed with the overall development We'll sell these just like we did in the Villas in Indian Creek, horizontal property regime. Our owners will own just the footprint, nothing outside. Everything outside the units will be common area, private streets that will be maintained by the HOA, private sidewalks and landscaping will all be maintained by the HOA as well. It's a very walkable community. We've got sidewalks along all the parking spaces next to the units. We've made some very strategic crossings across drive aisles and have agreed to construct a sidewalk from our property down alongside one side of Maya Drive, which does not currently have any sidewalk along it, so we make sure we can get back to a sidewalk to enjoy the amenities inside the existing Indian Creek. We have planned for landscape buffers around the entire perimeter of this project and we'll also be constructing a new trash enclosure and as well as a mail kiosk with this project as well. Example elevation to go along with the picture earlier, two-story townhomes, 1,200 square feet, minimum size up to about 1,450 square feet. We'll be utilizing the same materials that you see inside of Indian Creek. Got a mixture of brick and siding. That siding is a mixture between lap siding, board and batten, and shake. Here's an example of some of the floor plans. And again, our elevations will mimic these almost identically. Amenities themselves, as I mentioned, we're going to have a gazebo for kind of a community area on the southern portion of the property. Then we're also constructing the sidewalk to allow us to go back to the existing amenities which are located next to the stream. That's Puckett Creek. They've got an existing playground as well as some benches and walking trails in that area. We have planned for two primary points of access. One of those is back into Indian Creek itself off Maya Drive and the second to allow for emergency access back on to Spike Trail and Foxfire Court.
Is that a crash gate there, Matt?
It is. Right now, it's considered completely open for circulation.
Okay, so you said emergency exit.
Well, for emergency vehicles, good interconnectivity, but it could be used for everyday traffic at this point.
Okay.
Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have now or after the public hearing.
Any questions from members of the Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, before we open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by here. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward to the microphone that would like to speak either for or against this proposal. If you would, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and give your address for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes and if you would, any questions that you have or any comments, make all your statements toward the Planning Commission itself and if you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions and we'll try to get your questions answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll ask anybody to come forward. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak at this time. You don't have to raise your hand, ma'am. Thank you for doing it, but just one at a time, whoever.
Hello. Adam Rose, 2628 Foxfire Court. My house is immediately across from the so-called emergency exit. My house will definitely be affected by this development. I have several concerns and we'll try to hit the high points first. First of all, my neighbors have collected 106 signatures and we also have a map of everyone who has signed from the Deerfield subdivision. I'm sorry, I do not have a copy for everyone, but you guys are welcome to circulate this among yourselves. The so-called emergency exit, when people, this will be used as a cut-through from Fortress to get to John Rice, there's no doubt about that. And soon as people find a shortcut to get through anywhere, they'll use that. Now, when you look at this map, Spike Trail is a very curvy road. They will use Foxfire Court to cut through. So at nighttime, when people are coming out of this area, their headlights will shine right through every one of my front windows at my house. Also, with this increased traffic, I will feel very uncomfortable with my kids riding their bike in the street or even playing in the front yard. With someone texting or being under the influence of anything, just one turn and they will be in my front yard, probably flipped over because I have a deep ditch. The unincorporated area, and I choose to live in an unincorporated area, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have lines on the streets or anything like that. So just a poor mistake coming out of there, these people could potentially be in my front yard where my kids play every day. So please keep that in mind. Also, ask yourselves, if they were going to propose to build 70 townhomes across the street from your house, would you want them to build that much traffic and other dwellings across the street from you? My house will see almost the biggest effect of this area and my kids will see the biggest effect of this area. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Rick Mur. I live at 116 Vassar Court. My property backs up to the proposed townhomes. As you look at the map, you'll notice that 90% of the bordering properties are all detached single-family homes, not condominiums. This is an island in the middle of single-family detached homes. Most of your condominium complex is in Murfreesboro City. They have egress and ingress right there at a major fortress with the Villas Evergreens now. Less than 25% of the Villas Evergreen actually even touched this six acres. We're not opposed to development, but single-family homes would make a whole lot more sense than a condominium complex in the middle of single-family homes. Currently, we have egress and ingress for Blackman Farms, 470 homes. The Preserves at Indian Creek, 158 homes. Hillwood proposed 228 homes being constructed at this time and now the Villas Evergreens, another 70 townhomes. All those ingress and egress into Deerfield subdivision. It's too much. We definitely don't want this type of zoning. Again, we're not against single-family detached, but not 70 condominiums and 140 cars plus another, only 18 spare parking places for 70 homes. So we graciously plead with you to not accept the condominiums, townhomes for this type of zoning on that six acres. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Doherty. I live at 2622 Foxfire Court. My driveway is directly across from Linda Smith's driveway, so she's right in my front yard. This whole matter began when Linda wanted access to Maya Drive and she wished to be zoned city at that time. We, the surrounding neighbors, were informed that the land would be zoned residential single-family homes of no more than 12 to 15 when she met requirements. Now we're being told that contractors want to build 70 townhouses on the property. Has there been an impact study done to see if the effects will be in the surrounding neighborhoods? I moved into the neighborhood in 1992. I have watched a generation of children grow up in this neighborhood, including my own. And now I'm watching the second generation of children grow up. The children have always been able to walk, ride, or play on the streets. The same is true for the adults who like to walk or ride their bikes around the neighborhood. We are talking approximately 140 more vehicles in the townhouse development. How many of them will be driving through our subdivision or even from the next development over? Spike Trail, Doe, and Foxfire will become main roads. Deerfield will become like Casey Lane, especially since an additional 200-plus houses are being developed in the area south of Deerfield and connecting to it. What are these townhouses going to do to my home resale? I believe in making money, but not at other people's expense. The land under discussion is surrounded, the gentleman before me said 90%, I would have said 98, by single-family homes. I ask that you give the same zoning on this property. Please don't let 70 townhouses be built and destroy our lifestyles. To think the land would be never sold is ridiculous. To think the land would never be subdivided is naive. To build 70 townhouses is ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farm.
I am Teresa Farmer. I live at 846 Spike Trail. My home is directly next to the property. The street that they're wanting to connect to is right in front of my home. I would like to discuss the entrances and exits for the 70 townhomes. The two planned entrance and exits, one on Maya Drive, the secondary to exit into Foxfire Court. That will connect the 70 homes into our Deerfield subdivision. This prevents several challenges. First, our neighborhood is not equipped to handle the increase in the traffic since we don't have sidewalks. Our roads are very curvy. Second, our neighborhood is county and these townhomes will be city. Our neighborhood will be flooded with traffic from the city, but will not have the access to the city resources like police to handle the increase in traffic, patrol, or crime. Third, the new neighborhood that will be connecting into our neighborhood will not match the looks of our current neighborhood while the proposed, it will match the townhomes of Indian Creek, but it won't match the 90%, I'm assuming is what you said, 90% of the homes surrounding which are single-family large-lotted homes. If, I would prefer that it be done in single-family homes, but if this has to be done, I would rather eliminate the Foxfire Court entrance and there's two optional entrances and exits into the Indian Creek area already on the city side. That would make me feel a lot more comfortable. The other concern I have about that second entrance coming into Foxfire Court or Spike Trail would be, he said, as an emergency exit and as we're county, no emergency, from my understanding, officers would be able to entrance into the city through a county way. I'm not sure if I'm incorrect about that, but wouldn't emergency vehicles have to come in through the city side? I'm really concerned about the children in our neighborhood and, of course, it not matching our neighborhood. Thank you.
Amy Barbary. I live at 815 Spike Trail. I will be addressing the concern that the developer, Old South, has not met the requirements of matching the aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhoods the proposed 70 townhouses will impact. In the pattern book, Old South goes into great detail describing how the new property will tie into the look of Indian Creek. However, on page 11 of the pattern book, images 6, 7, 8, and 9 all show pictures of Deerfield Stables. Old South included these images of Deerfield Stables because they will be meaningfully impacted by the entrance and exit on Foxfire Court. The images show single-family homes on large lots with no sidewalks. Sidewalks were addressed in the pattern book as well. Old South writes on page 13, sidewalks will be provided throughout the development to create a pedestrian-friendly community. And on page 17, they even propose a sidewalk extension to allow residents to walk into the playground along Puckett Creek. However, the Deerfield Stables community was given no consideration from Old South. Their 70 townhouses and the traffic it will create will effectively destroy the possibility of a pedestrian-friendly community for the residents of Deerfield Stables. On page 20 of the pattern book, requirement 7 addresses the relationship of the proposed development to its neighboring properties. Old South's response is that their development closely mimics the type of developments in the surrounding neighborhoods. This response may be true for Indian Creek, but Old South has neglected to respond on how their proposed development will mimic the single-family, large lot, no sidewalk homes of Deerfield Stables. In conclusion, the property in question should either be revised to fit the aesthetics of all affected neighborhoods or it should sever the connection to Deerfield Stables by eliminating the entrance and exit on Foxfire Court. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Jessica Angel. I live on 3728 South Bend Drive and I'm actually in Indian Creek with the single-family homes. And I also would prefer single-family homes because there's land behind my house and it's all going to be townhomes, which it looks like it's going to be grass behind my property, but there's an easement behind my property and a barbed wire fence and I'm also concerned that children are going to get hurt trying to cut through that easement going from the townhomes to my neighborhood. And I also think it's going to hurt our property value. And my concern is also where is this trash enclosure? Is it going to be in my backyard, you know? So that's my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Eric McCullough, 605 Spike Trail. Listen, we're not trying to stop progress. We know progress is going to come, but we do have some, I think what we've been talking about with the traffic and everything, that's going to be a major issue. It takes anywhere between three and 10 minutes for us to just exit out on the John Rice Boulevard exiting from Spike Trail and the three minutes is actually on a good day and it's getting worse and worse. Also, what I'm concerned about with these development is you're going to have children come in and as an educator myself, we're going to start, Blackman Elementary is already in portables, so we're going to start increasing the ratio of student-teacher ratio, which we know studies have already verified that that's not a good thing to have, especially if you're a property developer, real estate surveyor that's wanting to increase your property values. You don't want to be in the community where your school systems are going to start to lag due to the amount of people that are in that same system. And they're talking about we're going to get access to the amenities and the whole time I'm thinking the amenities are the amenities that are around the area, which is going to be, like I said, the school systems and the roads. And again, do we have a five-to-10-year window of, are we going to replace the roads? Do we have any sort of contingency plan financially for sidewalks, for lighting? I haven't seen anything like that and that may very well exist. Like I said, I'm not against progress. I would prefer that we would keep our community cloistered off from that development so that we can still have our routes of egress as necessary because, let's be honest, in the next five or 10 years, Murfreesboro is going to keep blowing up over there. So you guys are going to have another emergency, you're going to have to get to at some point with these road development, but we can at least stave this off for right now and keep our community the way it is and that's our top concerns, I think.
My name is George Russell. My home is at 2604 Foxfire Court. I do have one major question as well. From what I understand, the entire Deerfield and Deerfield Stables subdivisions sued the city and won a lawsuit against being annexed, that it took an 85% vote for the entire community in order for a parcel to be annexed or the community to be annexed. We were never asked. So, does that fall under that lawsuit? Does it fall under those guidelines?
I'll have the city attorney to comment on that after the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name's George Ardell. I have financial interest in the home at 713 Spike Trail. It's not my first time before this board in my other property, Cherry Lane Acres, we dealt with this about 15 years ago. Similar thing, beautiful little neighborhood, minding its own business, developers come in, buy up a farm. We were given promises by these people and these chairs back then. They wouldn't tie into our neighborhood until... They wouldn't tie into our neighborhood until they were 80 percent built. That promise wasn't worth the paper it was recorded on in the minutes of the meeting because the developer came in inside of six months, maybe a dozen houses sold, and our neighborhood has been ruined since then. This neighborhood faces the same thing. It's a nice neighborhood. The infrastructure is barely adequate as it is. When you add 70 more residences, the majority of them are going to be a minimum of two people. Many will have more. People with kids, when those kids get a little older, they're going to have additional cars. So you guys aren't thinking about this. If you approve it, it's a, it's a bad idea. Single residents, like everything else, would be one thing, but that's not what they're asking for. But I, you know, I heard a very interesting question from the first gentleman up here. Would any of you people want to have this development put across from your property? Well, I can answer that question for you gents, because I can guarantee you, this would never become before the board if this kind of thing was wanting to be put in your neighborhoods. If it did come before the board, I'm sure that it would never pass, not from you people, from the city council. And it makes me just, you know, look back at the things we fought for in Cherry Lane Acres. The promises that were made, the promises that were broken by the developer and by the people in these chairs back then. We were lied to, we were misled, and now our property values are not near what they, what they would have been had that new development been not put in. It just makes me wonder if the people that were, that are in those chairs today, is it, the question has to be asked, does the developer with enough money to grease the palms of the right people get their way, or do the people who are paying the taxes over here, who can't afford to put together the big cash to grease the palms of the politicians, get their way? I'm going to tell you how you're going to vote. You're going to pass this, it's going to go get rubber stamped by the city commission, and these people are going to be screwed, just like we were. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ardell. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is George Howken. I live at 567 Spike Trail. I'm one of the oldest people here, and I'm probably the oldest person in the neighborhood. I've lived there since 1985, and we've raised two kids in that neighborhood, and we've seen generation after generation of new kids being born and playing in the neighborhood. This whole thing to me is about safety in our neighborhood. It is about having the proper planning. I would have loved to have seen Old South come to the neighborhood, have a meeting, and say, hey, what issues do y'all have? They didn't do it. With the planning commission, I wonder, how is it going to affect our neighborhood? Have y'all done any consulting with the other companies to find out how it's going to affect us? I don't know. I know, again, we're, are in the county, not in the city, and most people in the city don't think about the people in the county until it comes time to annex somebody. That's why we sued years ago. We really don't care if she sells the land and builds some homes, but we really do not want that entrance and exit into our neighborhood. That needs to be just totally blocked off. We also don't want the townhomes, because who wants somebody peering down into someone else's backyard? Where is your privacy? What is it your privacy worth? I really wish you would think about this and think, if I lived there, what would I want? And I want to thank you for allowing us to participate in this. Thank you.
That's my hair, I'm going to be on town. My name is Zari McCullough. I'm at 605 Spike Trail. We, I guess we're, bottom line, we're all here because we love our community. My husband and I, when we were looking for a home, I told him, I was like, I want to live here, and I never thought it would. I mean, we even bid on a house without looking at it. That's how much of an answered prayer it was. But we liked it because it's secluded, it's, it's, it's your TV dream, dream neighborhood. Our kids play outside, kids walk home from school, no worries. To give you just a visual of what they're proposing, because the traffic keeps coming up, from Spike Trail, from, I'm sorry, from Maya Drive through Spike Trail to John Rice, it's about half a mile. And I know that because I used to jog before my incident. But through Foxfire Court, it's about a mile, give or take. So you're proposing 140 cars during peak hour, give or take, go through a mile stretch. That's, that's concerning to us. That's, doesn't seem logistically plausible or desirable. But like I said, we just hope you will take what we've said tonight. There's a lot of emotion. We've tried to keep it contained to just specific facts, but, and we, we just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Last call. Sir, you've already come up once. Anybody else?
Hello. My name is Michelle Santos, and I live at 822 Spike Trail. My husband and I, we just moved into the neighborhood a couple years ago, and we actually looked for three years, trying to find a home desirable where we can have a good family life. And we've noticed that, and it's been wonderful there. However, we've also seen accidents along Spike Trail. There's been multiple times where the school bus in the area, the people actually own the school bus portion, they go down into the ditch, and they've done that multiple times. They've taken out mailboxes multiple times. Cars, multiple cars can't go along those roads without having to move over. If you have all of these extra vehicles coming along, there are going to be more traffic on there, and people are going to have more and more accidents. We have ditches. Every house almost has a ditch in front of their yard, and those ditches get flooded when it rains really hard. If you have more of this rainwater coming through, these ditches are going to fill. More of these cars that go through, they're going to go into those ditches if they need to go over to the side. We like our neighborhood the way it is. You're going to build there, obviously. However, we beg of you to simply not put that entrance there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Hi. My name is Kelly Mur. Sorry. I live at 116 Vassar Court. My property actually is at the edge of the property that's in proposal. I back up to that. And I just ask that you please, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but please consider this, because I will have the townhouses right there in my backyard. They'll be able to see everything me and my children are doing. And I don't, I'm not against building, like everyone else has said. I just ask that you please consider doing the single-family homes instead. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Melissa Cook. I live at 834 Spike Trail, and I just want to say, I've lived there for 10 years, and honestly, we used to not even lock our doors until the condos of Indian Creek were put in behind me. And then some teenagers came through, and we started locking our doors. And now this is going to be three houses down from me. I'm just wondering, what is the crime going to be like now? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Anybody else? Last call. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ives, would you like to address some questions?
I can. There was, the city did move to annex property that included this subdivision several years ago. I don't remember what year it was. There was a lawsuit filed to block the annexation. When a lawsuit is filed in a situation like that, it automatically does block the annexation until the court rules on whether it should go forward. Before we got a ruling from the court, state law changed. And under current state law, as a practical matter, no property can be annexed unless the owner of that property wants it to be annexed. That being the situation, the lawsuit that was filed was, was, it was basically, well, it was dismissed because it really, it became moot. The city cannot annex this property under the current state law unless a property owner who is also contiguous to the city wants to be annexed. So the amount of annexation that the city has done over the last, I guess, three years, two years now, has, has slowed down greatly. And whether that's good or bad depends on the point of view, but as a practical matter, that's the way it is. And since that law passed, I want to say, May 2015, I'm not positive of the date, but anyway, from whenever that effective date was, the city cannot annex without, as a practical matter, without the consent of the landowner.
Additionally, the question pertaining to emergency vehicles traveling throughout, through a unincorporated area to reach an incorporated area.
There is no prohibition on that. The public streets are public streets and can be used by anyone. As a practical matter, our vehicles, our emergency vehicles, as well as our service vehicles, try to avoid going through non-city streets. But if there's an emergency, and if that's the shortest route, I would expect that they would, they would use that route.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ives. Members of the planning commission, do you have any questions?
I do. And I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Taylor and Mr. Balachandra or not, but, I mean, can we at least talk about other entrances and exits that would be available? And I'd, I'd have to see the development itself, whereas could their exits and entrances just be through Indian Creek, or is that a, that not possible?
At least from our standpoint, I don't think that we would mind eliminating the Spike Trail, Foxfire, or it being gated for emergencies from, from an applicant standpoint. We would just need the one back to Maya. We feel like that's where our traffic is going to go anyway. It's the straightest shot back out to Fortress, which is the larger of the roadways between that and John Rice, and is a much more direct route. So we don't anticipate our homeowners utilizing the other route very frequently at all. Indian Creek, as a matter of fact, made a connection back into, I don't know if it's still Deerfield down that far south, but it made a road connection into Deerfield. It's probably been about eight years ago, I'm guessing is when that became active. It may have been close, it may have been on the term of 10 years when that road connection was made. And it has the same possibilities of going back toward John Rice that this connection would make, would have.
And I think, Mr. Lamb, just to maybe follow up a little bit, I think that when city staff looked at this proposal, we saw two things. We saw two public streets that were on purpose stubbed into this property. The, the county, when they approved the subdivision that includes Foxfire Court and Spike Trail, stubbed those two streets or provided frontage onto this six-acre tract. When we approved, we, the city, approved the Indian Creek subdivision, we also stubbed a public street into this six-acre tract. And I think we did that on purpose. I, I think we anticipated that this property would someday develop, and it would someday need access to city services and city utilities. And, and so, as, as a matter of planning, I think it's still good planning to see good interconnectivity through our neighborhoods. The street that allows your neighbor to drive through, or someone from a different subdivision drive through your neighborhood, also allows you to drive through their neighborhood. And, and quite honestly, there are destinations off of both John Rice and Fortress. There's a school system at Fortress Boulevard that many of the people who live in the neighborhoods we're looking at use the streets that Indian Creek built to get there. But there's also destinations along John Rice Boulevard, and there continue to be destinations added where the residents who are in Indian Creek would prefer perhaps to use those, perhaps Tractor Supply, or Sam's Club, or some of the locations there. So I, I still think interconnectivity benefits all neighborhoods. I, I think the interconnectivity that we've been able to create into the Fortress Boulevard, John Rice area, follows the Blackman Land Use Plan that suggested good east-west connectivity between our neighborhoods. We had good north-south connectivity, but it suggested increasing east-west connectivity so that we're not impacting as much our, our major routes like Highway 96 and Manson Park. So, so from that standpoint, I think it's still good planning. I think emergency services would be one critical element, but also look at the street network that's, that's serving the Deerfield subdivision. You've got to make a couple left turns and a couple right turns, so that's not a straight shot. I think Matt Taylor made a, Mr. Taylor made a good statement when he mentioned that, that we believe most of the traffic will be to Fortress Boulevard. And I think that's an accurate statement. It will be a, a straight shot on Maya Drive to Fortress Boulevard. It's a more circuitous route to John Rice Boulevard, but there will be some, no doubt be some of the motorists who take that route.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Ms. Green, did you have any comments?
Only if you have questions. I, I've took notes of several of the comments, and most of them were more comments than questions. And I think specifically, there were some about the trash enclosure, and the trash enclosure is not located in anybody's backyard, and the structures themselves have been pulled off the property lines so that they're not right directly on those property, on those adjacent property lines. And there is a type C buffer located between the proposed development and those single-family homes. So those have been pulled so that they're not towering over somebody's backyard, because that's something that, as a planning commission, you're sensitive to, and you've tasked staff to make sure that that doesn't happen. So we have looked at that with this plan as well.
If it was developed as a single-family neighborhood, you could still have two-story houses built there, couldn't you not?
Certainly, two-story houses could be built there with a, with a maximum height of 35 feet.
And no required buffer?
No, there wouldn't be a required buffer at that time. And it certainly, and when you drive through the neighborhoods, you see the difference in the villas at Indian Creek and the county subdivision. As we know, the city has different standards in the county. We will always expect sidewalks in our developments, and we know in the county that's not always the case. And so that aesthetic will be different because we will expect curbs, we will expect gutters, we will expect sidewalks, and we expect street lighting. When we did study the area in the county for annexation in 2006, we did come up with a plan to add city services in the county subdivisions, fire hydrants, streetlights, improvements to drainage. Of course, that was pending the annexation, and if the properties were not going to be annexed, the city wouldn't spend city taxpayer money on improving those areas that, that will not be in the city. So there was a plan for that. Because we don't anticipate any reasonable likelihood of the annexation going forward, the city won't be making those changes in the county subdivision.
I've got a question. Mr. Huddleston?
Mr. Huddleston? 20 years ago, 25 years ago, when Deerfield subdivision was built, the county culled the Sackdoff Spike and Foxfire to be stubbed in for a feeder street. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Young. What I see is that Spike Trail was, and Foxfire Court were intentionally built along this track of property as public streets.
So this decision to do this was made 25 years ago by the county?
I think the connection Spike Trail was made previously with the development of that neighborhood. I think that's a correct observation.
Thank you.
Mr. Snotherman, sir?
I guess I want to answer at least our comment on one of the statements that was made by politicians and that were for sale to the highest bidder. I think since I've been, had a political life, which hadn't been that long, I think that I've been given one donation by somebody who's in the real estate business. They gave me $1,000. I turned around and gave 500 of it to special kids, and I gave 500 of it to the Boys and Girls Club. I've not received one dime ever to make a decision on a development. So politically, this isn't about your reference to money. It's about planning our city and providing homes and residence for people who come to our community. And they're coming. We have to continue to build. I do understand your concern about the change. And the change will be some good, some bad. Obviously, if you've had a deer standing in the big field behind your house for the last 28 years or so that you've lived there, yeah, it's residential development now. And whether it's single-family homes or multifamily homes, it's still not going to be the same. So yes, it's going to change. As far as the water conditions, instead of just being a field with water that flows freely wherever downhill is, it will now be a designed system that will take water to a detention pond. It'll be retained. So you will actually be safer from watershed than you would be with no development there. So the development's actually a good thing from that perspective. The property will be developed to something, and you guys know that. We're all residents of the county. We pay county taxes, just like everybody in the county does. We're not two different teams here. The city of Murfreesboro builds parks for all those kids that he referred to that have grown up in the Deerfield subdivision, who've played baseball on our fields, who use our sports comms, our sports plexes, all those facilities. For people who come in from the county, do business with local businesses, you get the benefit of the growth of Murfreesboro and the many amenities that have come in, as well as hospitals and medical care and all the things that have improved in the city of Murfreesboro in my lifetime. So Murfreesboro is not your enemy. We are simply a city who has people coming, and we have to continue to build to accommodate those people who are coming. That's not trying to be intrusive on anyone, and this is a request from that land developer who has the right to develop their property, just like you have the right to develop your property within whatever it's owned. So the developer is doing what he is allowed to do within the guidelines. It's not a conspiracy. It's not a plan to try and tick off somebody in the county with a city development. I do understand the traffic concern. However, I do think the connectivity is a plus because for some of you whose children go to Blackman School, it would be advantageous to you, Blackman Elementary, it would be advantageous to you to have a shortcut to Blackman Elementary School. So the road would run both ways. I get your shaking your head, maybe your kids don't go to Blackman School, maybe you don't care, maybe you don't want the connectivity to Fortress. And that's fine, except for the fact that the roads go both ways. And in the event of a tornado coming through your neighborhood, the more access. Yeah. It's advantageous to you to have as many access points for emergency vehicles to get to your home as you possibly can. And so even though I agree that the entrance into the Spike Trail is probably needed, I do think there should be a crash gate on it that would prevent daily traffic from going into their neighborhood, because that's one of the concerns. That does cut them off from the school access that they, that I think would be beneficial to some of them. But the, but if, with the crash gate there, it would relieve some of their traffic, but still in the event of an emergency, there would be an access point into your neighborhood that would benefit you that, you know, you can laugh now, but when the tornado is coming through, nobody's laughing. So I appreciate your comment, and I appreciate your comments, even those that I disagree with, but we listened and we heard you, and thank you for having your input.
Any other comments, Bob, Planning Commission? There's no further comments.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor, did we have a picture of the dumpster, proposed dumpster enclosure?
I did not include a picture, but we would, it'd be like all of our other enclosures. It would be a masonry wall screened with evergreens. It is in the, if you're looking at it planned, you can have a lower right-hand corner or the southwestern corner of the property.
I'm sorry, we can't take it. Is that, is that a brick enclosure?
Yes, sir. Big brick enclosure with solid gates.
Mr. Taylor, what about traffic-wise, as any, and Mr. Balachandra might need to be consulted on this, would one entrance and exit to this development be adequate for 70 households?
Yes. I mean, for instance, when we're looking at a state highway, somewhere around the 70 mark is, T-Dot's rule of thumb has been in the past, if you don't have two exits, you get to about that 70 mark, then you have to start putting in a turn lane. If you have two exits, sometimes it'll let you get away with two, two there. And we're exiting back onto a low-volume residential neighborhood street, so you're not going to have the queuing problems. So one would be okay there, but two is obviously better.
Mr. Balachandra, would you like to comment on that, sir?
Good evening, members. Chairman Lamb, 70 is cutting, cutting close to, to really needing two, in my opinion, even though I think 70 is just a guidance, but this is an operational, it's an operational issue. That means 365 days, they will only have one way in and one way out of the, out of the site. And what happens in those cases are, you know, folks will just, you know, complain to the city saying that they have no other way out. In fact, there are several apartment complexes and places around the city that has come back to us for a second entrance because, you know, their residents have difficulties getting in and out of the site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Balachandra. Mr. Whitaker, do you have any comments?
I would just like to reiterate, Mr. Balachandra and Mr. Huddleston has said we have learned over the years that, and we have, we try not to replicate our mistakes. And connectivity is always good. We understand that we go through this, very often roads are stubbed out. When property goes extended periods of time before it's redeveloped and those stub roads are connected, we understand they don't like it, and neighbors aren't happy with it. But the connectivity for the, for the future is sometimes, as was pointed out, especially in emergency situations, to get in and out. And I think they'll find out, and what we've found in the past is that both county and city will end up, as the road does go both ways, not just one. It travels both, and I think a lot of them will find themselves going through the other direction that they don't have that option right now to make that connectivity. It's always best to do it. As Mr. Balachandra said earlier, we have had a lot of people come back, especially on multifamily dwellings, where we allowed to put in one and have actually added a secondary egress out of there. And they are right on the cusp of whether, I mean, could they get by with one? Yes, they could. Is it more convenient and more for the future and the connectivity better? Absolutely, it is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Green, do we know this subdivision right here would be the southwest side? That planned development, units per acre?
I think those are similar to 8,000 square foot lots. About five units per acre.
Okay. Very similar. Oh, I see. I was thinking, oh, five acres.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, what are the wishes of this commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion is made for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I do want to make a comment, though. I understand that the impact of the traffic, and I think, I wish that we could make this a one-in, one-out deal, but I think past history has taught us that we need the connectivity if anything ever does happen. That's my only hesitation with respects to this development in and of itself. But I think with the city's input and engineers' input, that we need the interconnectivity as part of the development itself. So, but as I said, I second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One negative. Motion carries. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and participating in the public hearing. This will be re-held again at the city council level. So there'll be another public hearing before the city council. You'll have to come back, you'll have a chance to come back again. We'll move on to staff reports, another business. We have one staff report, the hearing report from the principal planner regarding meeting locations during the city council chamber remodel. Mr. Whitaker?
That's me, sorry. As an item of other business, I wanted to make an announcement that the city council chambers, which we're sitting in currently, will be undergoing renovations very soon. And because of those renovations, our meeting locations will change. So my audience is not just you, Planning Commission, but also anybody who may be interested in watching TV or live. Those renovations are expected to begin June 20th, so very soon, and therefore, this space will be unavailable for meeting. We have been told that the renovations should wrap up by July 13th. And so what that means, the Planning Commission, is your next meeting, the meeting on the 22nd, will be held in City Hall, but in room 218. And some of you who've been on Planning Commission for some amount of time may recall the work sessions we usually held in room 218, and it's actually a very effective space for that type meeting, as it's not public hearings. So in two weeks, you'll have another Planning Commission meeting at 1:00, and that'll be...
Sir, would you mind, sir, would you mind going outside, please, with your comments? Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Green.
That's okay. I think I was trying to get louder and louder, but, so the meeting on the 22nd will be in room 218 here in City Hall, which is on the second floor. And it will not be a televised meeting, but that meeting is normally not televised. You do, however, have a Planning Commission public hearing scheduled on July 13th, which is a little different. It's that second Wednesday, as opposed to the first Wednesday in July, much like this month. And you, and the council chambers are anticipated to be finished for that meeting, but as a matter of planning, and as that's my job, I really don't want to plan to be in this room and advertise being in this room if maybe the renovations aren't complete. So we're actually going to have the public hearings in July at Patterson Park Community Center. And there'll be notices will be put in the paper as such, and we'll make sure that all of our materials go out that do state that. But it is a little different. So our very next meeting in June will be in room 218 upstairs in City Hall, and our public hearings in July will be held at the Patterson Park Community Center. I think Mrs. Jacob made a calendar and laid it on your desks, hoping to help communicate what I just described. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. This is just a report for your information.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions for Ms. Green? Ms. Drives, do you have something?
I do. Chairman, I have one item for other business. As you all know, the state law requires that the Planning Commission review and consider and make a recommendation with respect to proposed sales, changes of use, leases, or other activities involving city-owned property. And that includes property that technically is owned by the city but was purchased by and for MED. A couple of years ago, MED proposed to buy a tract of land out at the intersections of Malloy, I guess it's West Malloy and South Malloy, looking to put their pole yard and an engineering office out there, and that land was acquired. No construction has started at this time, and just recently, Quickway Transportation Company contacted MED and made a very attractive offer to purchase that site. I believe that Quickway has a contract to start shipping for the, what's the name of that? The seat company that's right next to this property, and so this property being adjacent to that is, is very good for them.
Johnson Controls?
Yeah, Johnson Controls. There's been a lot of discussion with staff, and ultimately, thank you, ultimately, it went to, the recommendation, or the proposal went to the power board, and the power board did recommend that we pursue the transaction and move towards selling the property. So we're asking, bringing this to Planning Commission tonight. Laid a memo on your desk, a copy of an MOU after, I'm sorry, a letter of intent, not MOU. I've been working on an MOU all day, a letter of intent, after power board approval was signed by the mayor, and so we're moving forward. It's still, of course, subject to council approval, and we'd like Planning Commission to take a look at that and make a recommendation tonight. To council, we, staff is recommending that Planning Commission approve this, and we'll move it towards city council at their next meeting.
Okay.
Happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
You just need a motion on it?
Yes, please.
Okay. If there's no questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion. Will you approve? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Drives?
No, sir.
Mr. Whitaker?
No, sir.
Ms. Green, Mr. Huddleston?
Yes, sir.
No further business.